Allison Sowers. Sowers.
I don't know the first time.
Okay. I thought it was like Powers, so Sowers.
Sowers, yep. Oh my, you guys have an arduous job ahead of you. But these young people who spoke tonight, they're just so elegant. It was just so wonderful to be here. It just makes me proud to be part of this county. I may be misinformed on where some of the budget cutting is going on, but I still feel like I need to read my statement here. "I'm a special education teacher at James Duckworth Regional School in Beltsville, and I had originally planned on speaking as an individual. However, after meeting with the school improvement team, I've agreed to speak on behalf of the staff at James Duckworth. In good times, I would be asking for curriculum-related supplies to bring equity to our school. However, I understand times are tough, and you only want to hear what we really need. We need staffing. The students at the regional schools have intensive needs. The reason we have a high staff-to-student ratio is because our students need intensive one-on-one support for instruction, life skills, social skills, and behaviors. Staffing as it is, is at a bare minimum. Last year, you pulled the lunch and recess monitors from the schools and asked staff to take, regular staff, to take turns covering lunch and recess duty. We can't leave a staff member in charge of a full room of students, many of whom can't feed themselves and require one-on-one staffing during meals. Many of our students are medically fragile. They need support of a fully-staffed room for their safety. We count on our paraprofessional staff to support the needs of these students. Our students with autism have intense behavioral plans that are in effect throughout the day, including lunch and recess. This requires constant monitoring of the students' behavior, including data collection and positive behavioral reinforcements, sometimes as often as once per minute. Dedicated assistants are often required to implement these plans. Our students with orthopedic impairments require a minimum of two staff members to take care of their personal needs at least two times a day. Academically, we are still required to provide our students with age-and-grade-appropriate level curriculum with modifications and adaptations. We're responsible for adapting the entire curriculum and creating all the work and materials and testing documents for our students. Our paraprofessional staff not only helps us adapt these materials, but they work directly with the students during all lessons and activities through the day." As you can see, the success of our educational program is our, as you can see, a key to the success of our educational program is our paraprofessional staff and our dedicated assistants. We cannot do it without them. It's a danger to our students, and there's going to be no learning going on if we don't have the full staffing there at the school. Our students have a right to access the curriculum as much as any other student who was here tonight, and we need to have our classrooms fully staffed. Thank you.
Thank you. William Rainford.
Ladies and gentlemen, and Prince George's County School Board, good evening. I address you as a concerned parent of this county and a staunch advocate of our educational system. I have been a resident of Prince George's County for seventeen years and would not wish to live anywhere else. My three children are enrolled in Prince George's County Public Schools, one in high school and two in elementary school. Since my high school student has been in kindergarten, my wife and I have watched program after program, resource after resource, be taken away. From the day we first enrolled our son in kindergarten, he would always tell me that he could not wait until he was in third grade. When I questioned him as to why third grade, he would reply, "That's when I can go to the science lab and do experiments." Imagine my frustration when I had to explain to him when he was in second grade that that was no longer possible because the science coordinator position was being eliminated. Trying to console my teary-eyed son, I found myself in tears. I've recently been made aware that now the reading recovery program is being threatened countywide. In these economic times, it is certainly understandable having to make adjustments. Every citizen of this county and this country has felt the impact of our struggling economy and have been forced to cut back on certain luxuries to maintain the family budget. However, I submit to you that reading recovery is not a luxury, but a necessity. Every child, at one point or another, has been or will be challenged by a subject or a concept they just do not grasp. If it has not happened yet, it will in some time in their educational career. Every one of my children has gone through a challenge. My oldest son had trouble staying focused and on task. My middle son struggled with math, and for my youngest, it was reading. Last year, I was disheartened by a letter we received as stated our youngest son was identified as being at risk for reading and was being placed in reading recovery. Although I have known his reading recovery teacher for quite some time, I have never fully appreciated what she does, that is, until last year. My wife and I tried to help our son with his reading, but progress was slow, to say the least. His reading recovery teacher began working with him and met with us regularly to inform him of his progress, inform us of his progress. She told us what we needed to do with him at home to reinforce what she was doing in the classroom. She gave us techniques to use and consulted with a friend of hers, who is an occupational therapist, to help with his handwriting. It would be very easy for me to adopt the "I've got mine, and now you get yours" attitude since my son is no longer in need, but now, since he's graduated out of the reading recovery program, has been on the honor roll every single quarter. Finally, I'd just like to say that we, as a community, cannot afford to marginalize our students or diminish their value by not providing them the educational resources they need to be the very best that they can be. Thank you.
Thank you. Alicia Hayes.
Alicia Hayes. Sorry. [inaudible] Good evening, Madam Chair, Superintendent, Board Members, and everyone else. My name is Alicia Hayes, and I'm the PTA President of Glass Manor Elementary School. I first would like to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I come before you again to discuss what matters most to all of us that is present tonight, and that is the education of our children. The budget cuts hurt them the most. You hear people talking about the jobs that are lost with the budget cuts, but what about what happens to the children when the people that held these jobs are gone? When you take teachers out of the classroom, it increases the size of the classes, which in turn creates issues concerning children receiving the guidance that is needed to be successful that school year. That allows for a child to fall through the gap and move on in their academic career lacking the important skills that would have been learned in that grade. This option should not be feasible, especially with so many students that end up being affected are either in the testing grades or in grades that are setting up the fundamentals in the children to be successful. With 2014 slowly approaching, and the mandate to have 100% of our children in testing grades, proficient in both reading and math, the last thing that we should do is to make it harder for them to obtain the needed information and learning to meet that goal. If you would like to see what the effects are going to be, come and check out the current situation of a fifth-grade class at my school. This is a grade level that during MSA is tested on reading, math, and science, and yet there is thirty-eight children in that classroom. There is another class at this school that has thirty-six children. So if that is where the class sizes at now, what will the class sizes look like with the proposed cuts? Another issue that affects our children is cutting back on guidance counselors at our schools. To have these counselors begin to share schools is not a feasible option as well for most schools. Some schools, like mine, are labeled as small schools and don't even have assistant principals. In those cases, guidance counselors assist in behavior interventions and work with student modifications, as well as communication with parents. Removing them from being full-time at schools like mine would be detrimental. This would create an issue of now overworking the remaining staff to take up the gap that is left, and that will have school personnel trying to fill the shoes of the missing counselor. Small schools already struggle with their current staffing based on the categorization of being a small school, and to remove valuable staff will have these schools struggling even harder than they already did. The last issue I would like to discuss with you tonight is the budget cuts, and if I can have permission from Madam Chair, I just have a couple more sentences.
Yes, ma'am, please finish.
Okay. The last issue I'd like to discuss with you tonight is just the budget cuts regarding reading recovery specialists and media center specialists. These people are the key to instilling pleasure in reading in children. We're basically stating by removing these people that we want our children to fail. They must be taught to read to succeed. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Board Members, and thank you for this opportunity. I really appreciate the tough job you have in reconciling this budget. The cadets have, and the other students have spoken so eloquently that I'm just going to get away from my repaired remarks, and please let me recount a personal story. Came here as a single parent in 2003. I went to my junior ROTC job. She went off to Eleanor Roosevelt. I had done the good parent job, but the things that you saw exhibited by these cadets is what I experienced as a parent with my daughter, so that by the time she graduated, she was confident, well-spoken, and now she's getting ready to graduate from Virginia Wesley this year, and she is an honored student, courtesy of Prince George's County Public Schools. I want to touch on a couple of things. The more bang for the buck you get with junior ROTC instructors, and I have a suggestion. I want to remind the board that half of our salary, as a student mentioned earlier, is paid for by each respective service. Beyond that, the books, uniforms, and supplies, you don't see, that comes from the service. That investment helped give you what you saw from the students this evening, plus the time and attention we give our cadets. In my eight years of service, I have been asked and happily agreed to teach several courses outside of AFJ ROTC. They include international studies, history, health, and now financial literacy. As with J ROTC, I push education in my classes, accepting nothing but excellence from my cadets and students. At another level, at my school, we manage in-school suspension, and believe me, after a class with Mr. Barnes and my NCOs, they don't want to come back. But you know what? It's amazing how tough love, real love, have them coming back to you outside of in-school suspension at other times. So now, I know as many students outside of junior ROTC as I do inside of junior ROTC, and it's just an honor to wear our uniform and serve our country in this capacity. Here's a suggestion I have. We're establishing in the future proposed academies in global studies and other areas. Why not take advantage of junior ROTC and fuse us and collaborate with one of those academies? For example, global studies. There's no activity outside the Department of State that is involved as globally as the US military, and no, it's not just about going out and fighting. It's about development and help and education. Just ask our captains in Iraq or Afghanistan, or Sudan, or Haiti. In closing, I just hope that there is a way to keep this program in Prince George's County Public Schools. We've got about six, seven thousand students enrolled in it now. It's helped thousands of students have given back to the county and to our country. Thank you very much for this time.
Good evening. My name is John Eggleston, and I teach Naval Junior ROTC at Bowie High School. This evening, my comments are in support of J ROTC programs in the county and opposed to budget cuts reducing those programs in large swaths. As you know, citizenship is part of the implicit curriculum at all of our schools, and citizenship is indeed fostered in many parts of the curriculum and in many programs. However, it is part of the explicit curriculum in J ROTC, one of the few programs in our schools that is explicitly about character development. Bowie High School established an NJROTC unit in 1993, and it has been an integral part of the community ever since. The partnership has resulted in great things. In all but two of these past seventeen years, the J ROTC unit has been designated a distinguished unit by the Navy, placing in the top thirty percent of all J ROTC units nationwide. We usually have about one-hundred-and-ten to one-hundred-and-twenty first-year cadets each academic year. This means that approximately one-sixth of each class takes at least one year of J ROTC. This is a program that remains important to our school. We all know that mounds and mounds of research show that students do significantly better in high school if they are involved in extracurricular activities. NJROTC is a twofer. It has both the curricular and an extra-curricular piece. It gives many students a chance to belong to something bigger than themselves. Certainly, some of these students are involved in other school activities, but many are not. For these students especially, J ROTC is a path to enjoying high school that then leads to success. We have a large number of students that stay after school every day to be part of our competition teams, just to be with this group, or be part of tutoring and mentoring programs. As a matter of fact, I often have a hard time getting them to leave the building when I want to go home three hours after school is closed. We have become their extended family. When I earned my MED, my thesis work was on informal education. The extracurricular part of J ROTC is an extremely effective informal education setting. We like to speak of many of our activities as leadership laboratories. Student cadets gain an immeasurable amount of leadership experience, as well as improving their abilities with handling interpersonal relationships and group dynamics. This adds key bits to their toolkits for success in whichever endeavors they take on for their life's work. We spend a lot of time in this system talking about college and career-ready. Part of the career-ready piece of J ROTC is self-evident. With respect to college-ready, our courses are flexible enough to allow personalized mentoring of each student towards college programs. The data shows that in all county J ROTC programs, among students that have taken four years of J ROTC, there's a very, very high percentage that matriculate at four-year colleges and universities, and a high percentage of those have scholarships. This is a successful program. Every college application asks for information about student activities and specifically asks about leadership experience. The soccer team may have two to four co-captains, but J ROTC has literally dozens of leadership roles for students, starting as early as second semester freshman year. In a former life, I had occasion to sit on a college admission board, and these experiences are appreciated and do matter. At Bowie High School, the J ROTC classes have a quarterly potluck dinner for our cadets and their families. At this dinner, we recognize the cadets that advance on the program. We routinely host three-hundred-and-twenty to four-hundred people at each of these four events, a number higher than most other school activities, including most sports events. I think that this attendance shows the value that our parents place in the program. We believe in the value of informed and responsible citizens, the habituation of ordinariness and precision, personal honor, self-reliance, individual discipline, and leadership. Thank you.
Sean Schoonover.
Sorry, Schoonover. That's how I got you.
Say that again?
Say what?
Schoonover?
Schoonover, yes. Yeah. Kind of like scoot over. Good evening, everybody. My name is Sean Schoonover. I am a graduate of Eleanor Roosevelt High School, 2004, and I was, that's a big picture up there, I was in the J ROTC program for four years out of my five years, no, I'm just kidding. Four years, for all four years of high school. And right now, what I am doing is I am the operating partner of Jersey Mike Subs Team Washington. I don't know if you guys have ever heard of Jersey Mike Subs. We are a new franchise in the state of Maryland. We have three stores in Maryland right now. We are looking to grow to about one-hundred-and-forty in DC, Maryland, Virginia. And what my main goal, my main role is in, sorry, I'm very upset that J ROTC program is being considered to be canceled right now. I started laughing when I heard about it. I was like, no, why? This is silly. Anyways, it's not silly. But my main role in the company is to develop people and to ensure that the quality of our product and the standards of our employees are withheld, are upheld. Now, the J ROTC program has taught me things to get me to where I am today, and they also, I also still do these things in my company right now that uphold our standards in our company. The three things that come to my mind about the J ROTC program that I've learned are attention to detail, discipline, and dress. Dress sounds a little funny, but I'm going to get to that. Attention to detail, just to tell you how I use it right now, is the detail of our standards. My first job before we opened up our first store last February was to write a uniform policy. My uniform policy is the mirror image of the J ROTC program. I mean, it's very strict, pressed, you have to come to work with a clean pressed uniform. If you don't, you're going home. I mean, I want seams down the center of your pants. I want the break in the shoe. You know, I want everything. I want the gig line straight, which I still do. Every time I'm walking around, I'm making sure my belt is straight, and all that I've learned through the J ROTC program. Okay, that's one thing. All right, I'm very, I'm worked up right now. I'm worked up. Okay. Another thing is, is the detail of the training of our quality of our product. I have to be very detailed in telling people how to make our product. If not, the quality of our product will go down, and so will our customer clientele. You know, they'll go down as well, and we won't be in business. You know, and my business is in PG County. It's in Laurel, on the PG County side, anyway. Okay, discipline. When I walked, I actually walked into the classroom today for the first time, and, oh, crap, but I'm going to tell you the last thing right now. I'm going to tell you the last thing right now. The J ROTC guys, I mean, they are, they are basically who I am in my company. I'm a people developer. You know, I grow, I develop managers so that we can develop more stores, and if we get rid of these guys, the people developers of our children, you know, what is that saying to our children? We're canceling out our development, our growth in our company, in our country, and in our community. So, I don't know if that made sense, but...
Thank you, Mr. [inaudible].
It did? Okay, all right.
Good evening, Dr. Height, and members of the board. I'm Major Sal Bova, and I'm an instructor over at Eleanor Roosevelt High School. This is one of those evenings, if you are involved with junior ROTC as an instructor, where your chest swells with pride when you see the way these young students can represent themselves and articulate what's on their mind. It gives you a good feeling inside. We in junior ROTC are very proud in knowing that children come first in our curriculum. Our stated mission is to develop citizens of character dedicated to serving their nation and community, and we do this by educating our cadets in citizenship, promoting community service, instilling responsibility, character, and self-discipline, and providing instruction in air and space fundamentals. Currently, as society is recognizing the need for exercise and proper diet for our youth, the ROTC curriculum mandates that twenty percent of our cadet grades must be made up of physical education and wellness. As we see our society agonizing that today's youth is not prepared for life after high school, the AFJ ROTC curriculum teaches life skills and career opportunities that include interpersonal skills, money management, and unique leadership and project management opportunities. AFJ ROTC instructors are patient and perseverant. You could say firm but fair. With our ninth graders who are transitioning into high school, bringing with them uncertainty about how to succeed, we address this with hands-on instruction and in-house mentoring programs to try to help these youngsters bridge that gap. In school year 09-010, at Eleanor Roosevelt, our cadets performed over two-thousand hours of community service, including color guards for the Department of Agriculture, NASA, the United Negro College Fund, and at Memorial Day and Veterans Day celebrations for our hometown community of Greenbelt. Our cadets marched in parades in Greenbelt, Bowie, and Berwyn Heights. We also served dinner at the Morningside Assisted Living Centers in Laurel, their Christmas and Valentine Day celebrations. We laid Reis Across America at Arlington National Cemetery. At Eleanor Roosevelt High School, the cadets enjoy strong support and encouragement of our principal and appreciation and recognition from the faculty and staff. The AFJ ROTC footprint is evident at football games and awards assemblies, and from school open houses to the baccalaureate ceremony. Approximately thirty-five percent of the over two-thousand community service hours I mentioned earlier are performed at school functions. Sixty-seven percent of the graduates are now attending college. Forty percent of them have received national recognition in areas such as leadership, ethics, character, and academics. Still others are hard-working citizens making contributions in their local communities and in our nation's military services. There are more accomplishments, but time is up. Although I've been speaking about the cadets at Eleanor Roosevelt High School, what I have just told you is representative of every one of the twenty-three junior ROTC units in our county. Our students deserve to continue to be put first, and the AFJ ROTC program should be fully funded and remain configured as is.
Good evening. I'm Major Lois Davis from Bladensburg High School. The proposed budget reduction calls for the establishment of five regional J ROTC sites and elimination of forty-one full-time employees. Presently, that's all the information we have. Many questions are unanswered. We are certain that the board is aware of the positive image J ROTC brings to our county. What I am not certain of is that the board is aware of all we bring to the county. This county has the largest concentration of cadets of anywhere in the world. Oxonell High School has the largest Air Force junior ROTC unit in the world. Our student enrollment has increased every year for the last three years. The success and growth of the J ROTC program lies in the progressive, academically sound curriculum we have. Cadets are taught sound leadership practices, aviation history, global studies, science of flight, exploration of space, wellness, and practical life skills. We are more than a color guard in a drill team, although we do that very well. We expose our students to leadership camps, service honors camps, and flying. If you believe J ROTC is a life-changing experience for teens who need good adults and good choices, and I know we all do, then I want to offer that, and we'll want to offer that experience to every student that we can. To say that we are happy with five regional sites is to say that we are happy with letting students slip through the cracks. Hopefully, you won't be happy with that. Just as importantly, you can offer the full J ROTC experience with only a few students. It is hard to demonstrate the full range of followership and leadership with only five units. It's tough to offer a robust line of extracurricular activities with a handful of cadets. Well, how do you determine value? While the equation is different in every school district, I think it would look something like this: performance plus economics equal value. No one could argue that our county programs perform. We have programs that are nationally recognized as distinguished and organizational excellent units. Our students receive thousands of dollars in scholarships. Most of us have so many trophies, we have a hard time finding a place to put them. Our programs positively affect our schools' academics by setting academic goals, supporting core subjects, making good grades a condition for promotion and leadership positions. Performance may also mean improving graduation rates, decrease in discipline problems. J ROTC has proven success in those areas also. Economic is what the district is paying for, half of our salaries. Our services take care of uniforms, money for field trips, food for our students. Simply put, we bring value to the county.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Cadet Second Lieutenant H. D. Sanderson, and I am currently a junior attending Dr. Henry A. Wise Junior Senior High School. I've been in ROTC for two years. I've come before you this evening because I believe that if you cut J ROTC out of the county budget, you will be making a big mistake. Why would you want to cut a program whose goal is, and I quote, "to build better citizens for America"? I believe that we shouldn't be cutting programs like this, but we should be encouraging more and more people to sign up. I've attended and graduated from three leadership schools, one of which I was only one of ten to go to West Virginia. I take pride in saying that. In order to graduate those camps, I've had to learn self-discipline, respect, leadership, honor, integrity, selflessness, and so much more. These traits haven't only applied to my success in AFJ ROTC, however, but it has also helped me in my classroom, in my home, and in my community. As has been pointed out earlier, the county only pays for half of our instructors' salary, and that Air Force ROTC pays the other and that Air Force ROTC pays the other half. I would also like to point out that Air Force ROTC pays for the cadets' uniforms, such as what I'm wearing. They help us to pay for our camps when our whole entire program can't afford it, and they pay for our books and other financial aid our unit may need. According to this information, like I said before, the county only pays half of the salary and for us to use our facilities. Uh, there are currently about six thousand ROTC cadets in Prince George's County. I've been told that you wish to keep JROTC running by putting us into five clusters. This means you'd have to bus some one thousand cadets to each of these clusters, and that is not counting the estimated two hundred or so that are already in these clusters. The average school bus can hold around twenty-six kids. This means that you would meet forty-seven buses to take them to their clusters and about an hour and a half later, take them all back to school. With the county only having to ever pay half a salary in the cost of a facility, it seems to me that the county would be wasting a lot more money in the cost of gas. You may say that we could just cut the numbers. My question is, how are you going to decide who stays and who goes? When you consider this, consider the fact that you may be cutting a future leader of America. To conclude, I don't know what I would do without ROTC in my life. It is a program that puts integrity first, service before self, and strives to have excellence in all we do. Thank you for your time.
Kenrick Barclay.
Good evening, everyone. First off, I'd like to commend the ROTC cadets for representing and showing your worth by speaking so eloquently and respectfully about such a passionate matter. Also, I'd like to thank all the teachers for fighting for your jobs. At the end of the day, this is what it comes down to, fighting for your money. Um, I'm Kenrick Barclay. I'm an alumnus of Bladensburg High School, class of two thousand and one. I was the wing commander of MDO eight oh twos, AFR, AFJ ROTC unit back in two thousand and one. Uh, recently, I was talking to Major Davis and Sergeant Williams. They informed me that there were going to be budget cuts and countywide, the program could be cut in half. You know, I found that really disheartening that such an integral program would even be on the chopping block when it comes down to the value that it serves the community. When discussing JROTC at Bladensburg High School, it's hard to figure out where to start. Do I talk about when I was that freshman that wasn't too sure about myself, just feeling comfortable in my own skin, or do I go straight to the end result, which is what it molded me into, the productive citizen that I am today? JROTC, especially at Bladensburg High School, lives up to the mission of building better citizens. There are a lot of community service opportunities to help students earn their community service hours. Personally, I've earned over two hundred just by participating in JROTC. Forty was the requirement at the time I graduated for community service hours. Um, it prepares students for the real world. It also gives parents and students a pride of accomplishment and pride when, you know, they put on their uniform. How many other classes can actually do that for you? They teach you how to conduct yourself and present yourself to the world. Everyone from the small child watching a JROTC cadet march in a Memorial Day parade to the CEO that eventually will interview that cadet for a high-paying job, the skills learned in the JROTC program are indispensable. For some students, this will be the first and only time they're suited for a uniform or any type of formal attire. As you get into higher levels of leadership education, you get taught interview skills, things that are very instrumental in becoming successful in the real world. I remember sitting in Chief Jackson's, um, class back, back in oh one. He actually started as an instructor at Bladensburg High School. He's now in Laurel, I believe, still. And, um, he, he taught me things such as how to dress for success, such as Sergeant Williams, Major Davis, Sergeant Eisen, and Sergeant Guens who was there at the time also. Um, also, in ROTC, you get a chance to be respected by your peers as a leader. That's something that people just don't see much anymore. A student can command such attention and respect, they can step into a classroom and all voices go quiet, opposed to a paid faculty member that waves their hands and can't get an ounce of attention. Cadets do this, children. Alright? Leading classes such as drill, physical activ, physical fitness activities, and even teaching class themselves are the ways that they show these leadership skills. Um, in conclusion, I work for the federal government, I own my own company also. All of these skills, all that leadership that ROTC gave me is what makes me who I am today. And I'm here not as a parent, 'cause I don't have any kids, but as a concerned person who wants to see all the kids in PG County get theirs, just like I got mine.
Matthew Mulhern.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, I am Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Matthew Mulhern, a senior at Dr. Henry A. Wise Junior High School and a commander of my Air Force JROTC unit. I do not become, I do not come before you today as a student or as a cadet. Today, I come before you as a leader. When I received the news that JROTC was going to be downsized, I was greatly disturbed. JROTC has been my passion, my love, and my life. It has made me the person I am today. I currently have a four-point-oh GPA. I am fourth in class out of five-hundred-and-eighty-seven, the president of two honor societies, and have already been nominated to the United States Air Force Academy. Junior ROTC produces some of the best leaders you will ever see in a high school environment. So, it baffles me that you want to take away the leaders of our schools and our community. Here in Prince George's County Public Schools, we need the leaders produced by JROTC. These leaders strive to be the best students, to have the best grades, and to be the best to come out of Prince George's County Public Schools. JROTC cadets are not only active within their units, they are the presidents of honor societies, the captains of sports teams, and the honor roll students. JROTC not only produces the best leaders, but also the best students in Prince George's County. President John F. Kennedy once said, "Leadership and learning are indispensable to each other." I believe this remains true here in Prince George's County. We need both excellent leaders and excellent students, so why get rid of the program that does this? JROTC creates leaders who lead by example, and this is priceless in a high school environment. Junior ROTC cadets are always surrounded by their peers, and as the leaders of the school, they are looked up to. I am constantly approached by other students and asked, "Matt, how do you get all those awards?" Or, "Matt, how do I get to be in your position?" I tell them to do the best in everything. Be the best student that you can be, get the best grades you can get, and take every opportunity you can get to be the best of the best. They always reply, saying that they want to be just like me and they want to be in my position. My presence as a leader motivates my peers to be better. They push themselves so they can one day rise to the top. However, if we take away JROTC, we ultimately take away our schools' leaders. Our peers will have no one to look up to, no one to push them to, to do better, and no one to build the next generation of leaders. JROTC is vital to the success, to the success, excuse me, success of Prince George's County Public Schools. We need the leaders it produces, and we need the excellent students it produces as well. I would like to thank you for your time, and I am respectfully requesting that we do not downsize JROTC here in Prince George's County, because if we do, we ultimately downsize the number of excellent students and leaders we have in our schools. Thank you.
Andrew Brown.
Good evening, Dr. Height, um, School Board, and Community of Prince George's County Public Schools. Um, before I begin, on behalf of Prince George's County Public Schools, I'm gonna challenge all of you elected board members, the same way you harassed and pressured those senators and those delegates for, and small business owners for endorsements, the same way you asked them for help in our PG County schools, come out to these meetings and come out to help our financially for all these programs, 'cause nobody deserves to lose their job. Next, I would like to talk about my only personal experience about JROTC. I graduated in two thousand and ten from MLVOs at high school. Unfortunately, I only spent three years there instead of four. Freshman year was horrible, one-point-eight-six GPA. My next semester went into JROTC, three-point-three-four. I was, my parents were amazed, my parents saw the, made the difference in me. Now, I can go back into my community and my church and be a leader and lead the youth. And not only that, but I could also lead the adults in my church. I had a guy come to me the other day, he's in a management position. He came to me and he said, "I don't know how you do it, but there must be something about ROTC that you can do what you do," because he just sees that leadership inside of me that he himself can't imagine. The same, let us, let us think about this, and I use myself as a testimony. If, if I wasn't inside JROTC, you would probably be at my funeral. If I was inside JROTC, that's one more drug dealer you could be concerned about. If I was in a JROTC, maybe that's one more rapist you can be concerned about. But I wasn't in JROTC, that's one more positive impact to our community. That's one more person to influence somebody else to do good in, in the community. That's, that positive energy that JROTC brings, that can be not only in our county, but in our state. So, please do not tear apart this JROTC family. You wouldn't like yours to be torn apart, so don't tear apart ours, and thank you.
Ken Harriet.
Good evening to the board and superintendent. My name is Ken Harriet, I'm resident of Prince, Prince George's County. When I heard about the cuts to the JROTC program, I, um, became very concerned. For one, you've heard of a lot of testimony today. After a while, the testimony kinda glosses you over because you're hearing the same distinct message over and over. Sometimes, after a while, you stop hearing it. But what I do wanna say is, is that everything can't be measured in dollars and cents. Many attributes and qualities that the students in JROTC possess or is imputed to them by their instructors are intangible. And those qualities stick with those cadets for the rest of their life. Not only that, they also are a great influence on those individuals that are not in JROTC. When people in the community that they know, that are involved in activities that are not, uh, good, drug dealers, thieves, or whatever, but they know them in the community, they're respected even though they don't hang out with those people. They see the qualities that those people possess. They see the maturity, and they see that they have found something in their life that is able to get them and keep them above the activities that they're involved in. Now, you don't hear that in the news. But the qualities that are intangible, I believe, are the most important part of the NJRTC program. Yes, they wear the uniform. Yes, they march and go to ceremonies. Yes, it costs something for the school board and the county to fund them. But what would you rather have in your community? What future leaders would you rather have to replace you when you retire? What impact would it have to have people with less leadership, less discipline, less self-control, that aren't willing to learn, that can't get along, don't have any interpersonal The choice becomes greater than dollars and cents. I think it becomes a moral choice. You want students in the schools to display and be example for those that are weaker so that they can bring them up, and I think that's the value of the NJRTC program. Those kids infect the other ones that are not in the program, but you don't, you can't see that because it can't be measured in dollars and cents. Thank you.
Lieutenant Carl Pops.
I'm Dr. Height. Board members, I really thank you for your time. At this point, we've heard so much, and I just wanna cap what we haven't heard. First, let me say that, uh, with all due respect to the two young men, we are not here to fight for our jobs. We're fighting for these kids, we're fighting for our kids. Thousands of our kids will make positive contributions through the program that has been set up, that people before us have laid down, and hopefully will continue on. These wonderful young people, uh, Dr. Height, uh, when I was told of this meeting, I went and looked at the, the video in my planning period. And, uh, you mentioned you want to increase skill components, independent learning, critical thinking, personal responsibility and organizational responsibility, as well as problem solving. I think every one of these people here have already demonstrated that they have done that and done it more than you can imagine. In this program, they do handle budgets. In this program, they do put together the curriculum in action. We don't call them field trips 'cause it sounds like it's a fun thing. We've gone to University of Maryland to have college visits. We're working on SAT, we're working on life skills, we're doing a lot of things that I'm very proud of. When I first entered the school, people would say, "Colonel, one of your students..." And I always thought, "Why you say one of your students? They're one of our students." But, "One of your students was late. One of your students dropped out of an AP math class. One of your students..." Now, okay, I'll handle it, I'll handle it. Then I began to realize that it was a compliment because they saw something special in their uniform. They saw the higher expectations went up for the kids who were in ROTC, and we carried it out. And at Duval High School this year, uh, security and the principal have talked about this year with a great set of kids we have. We don't have the problems that we had last year. And I smile because I know last year we had a hundred and ten cadets. This year, we had three hundred and sixty. And because one-fifth of the school is walking around in a uniform at one time or another, one-fifth of the school has the opportunity to learn about integrity and service above self, that they've made an impact. At first, our little corner was somewhat, um, an element of shame. People would tease, but I've taught the kids to recognize. I just tell people, "My uniform is undefeated, how about yours?" We've captured that corner of the building. Now, we walk around and we demonstrate all throughout, these kids are excelling and they will do great things, they will be very successful. But I just think you ought to know that these people behind me are not fighting for their jobs, they're fighting for our kids. And understanding that my kids know what scarcity of resources and you have to make a decision, but when you do that, consider the total impact. Thank you.
My apologies, Colonel. Debbie Steele Snyder.
Good evening, everyone. I have a student at the Science and Technology Program at Eleanor Roosevelt High School and a student at the Robert Goddard French Immersion Program. And I too am concerned about the changes to the transportation for these programs. I ask that if you have to change them, please do so with the utmost care, 'cause I too am afraid that we will create a, an environment where we have haves and have-nots and also have elite schools. Those families who are able to provide the transportation for their children, those children will go to the programs, and for the families who cannot provide the transportation, those children will leave the programs. We'll probably also have students and families who are gonna give it their best shot and try to stay there, but because of their transportation situation, they'll probably have irregular attendance in school. In the instance, in my neighborhood, every child that made it into one of the specialty programs through the lottery system made just a tiny bit of room in our locally extremely chronically overcrowded schools. Thank you.
Cassandra Moore Crawford.
Good evening, Dr. Height and members of the board. My name is Dr. Cassandra Moore Crawford, and I'm the parent of two children at Robert Goddard French Immersion School. I am here to dissuade the board from eliminating transportation to specialty programs. Prince George's County Public Schools has many specialty programs to which the children of our county are transported via the Department of Transportation every day. These programs enrich the lives of the children that are enrolled. The elimination of transportation to specialty programs would have a negative impact on enrollment in these programs. In these difficult economic times, many families have opted to downsize to just one family vehicle. Under such circumstances, under such circumstances, these families would not be able to drop off and pick up their children from school, thus forcing them to withdraw their children from specialty programs. Another issue that would arise from the elimination of transportation- Another issue that would arise from the elimination of transportation to specialty programs would be the increase in vehicular traffic at the commencement and dismissal of school each day. This increased vehicular traffic would pose a safety risk to our children. In addition, the attendance for these programs would suffer since several hundred families cannot deliver their children to school as efficiently as several buses. Since attendance is tied to adequate yearly progress, AYP, many schools hosting specialty programs may not meet their AYP because of the elimination of transportation. Eliminating transportation to specialty programs is not equitable. This proposed budget cut does not affect every child and every family in the county. It affects children and families that won lottery slots, earned high academic scores, or demonstrated superb performing or creative art skills to gain entrance to a specialty program. In essence, this cut punishes students and their families for attempting to achieve academic success above the Prince George's County Public Schools' core curriculum. In addition to directly affecting specialty programs, this proposed budget cut will have an indirect effect on other resources of the school system. Decreases in enrollment in specialty programs will invariably lead to an increase in enrollment in neighborhood schools. Many of our neighborhood schools are already struggling with issues of overcrowding. Overcrowding in neighborhood schools would tax and strain students, teachers, administrators, parents, transportation, and the entire school system. Loss of transportation to specialty programs would cause our students to lose the enrichment that came from being enrolled in these programs, and thus lose a little of the diversity that makes our county unique. The motto of the Prince George's County Public Schools is "Children Come First." Please keep this in mind as you make the difficult decisions needed to close the budget deficit. No child in our school system should be placed at a disadvantage because of budget cuts such as the proposal to eliminate transportation to specialty programs. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you.
I want to thank you for your patience, remind you to follow the website with regard to our additional budget public hearings and board work sessions. Colleagues, we are adjourned. Thank you.